Say overnight rental or.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should I have been, I'm sorry.
That was okay. No, I just wanted to make sure we were.
Yeah, yeah. All. So from a single unit used as a nightly rental to a cluster to a hotel.
In all zones.
And what?
In all zones.
In all zones. You were referencing some part of this.
The last page.
The last page.
Has our, there's two. There's a schedule at the top.
Oh, yeah. Okay. We are familiar with this, actually.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know how are we familiar with this.
You've seen it before, but it's been, I think we saw it in November or December.
Okay.
Briefly.
Oh, and I think with respect to the December meeting? Yeah, okay.
So that's just to show you that if we're talking about five and a half months, that we're, this is something that could, I think, easily be adjusted to meet that schedule. We've got the capacity to do that, but we will need to kind of rethink a few things as we move forward to make sure that we, again, that we have the right team together here to address the nightly rentals issue. We do have a firm called Lewis Young Robertson in Birmingham. They're economic planners and we work with them a lot. They may have that expertise. I'd have to reach out and find out if not, we'll find the right group to join us and then we'll just give you, if you want, we can prepare an addendum to our current scope.
I think that sounds great. So am I understanding you correctly that we can get both the future land use map and the, like, à la carte, pull in this nightly rental piece altogether?
I think so. I think it would make sense. We do a lot of public involvement. It's something that's a cornerstone of our projects. We don't move forward without them.
Thank you.
And it's something that I think that it would be really important that we not over-public involve the people. In other words, if we can do it all in one set of meetings rather than coming for one for the land use and then coming back to the public, because we have a hard time getting people to come and get engaged.
Oh, you're in Moab.
And so if we could do it in a way that we can, and this is a hot enough topic that it's going to, I think there's going to be some spillover between them, that we will get people that are interested in nightly rentals that then maybe stay to talk about land use in general.
Yeah.
So there's a, we like getting hundreds of people to meetings. We're also, we have some new tools that we're using that can get information very quickly, some online tools of sort of mapping and response tools that we just started using that have had great success with. So that's not included in here, but we could certainly add it. And so what I think would probably make most sense is if you give me some outlines of what you need, and I think that we have the beginnings of that, I can quickly put together an addendum, get it to David, I guess, and then we can negotiate back and forth. And then as far as involving the county, I'd assume, yeah, you'd like to give me some direction on how to proceed with that.
Well, I think we would, like I was saying, at minimum, invite them and, you know, have them participate in the, in the workshops that are held.
Would that be, okay. Zachariah and his crew or?
Well, so the council in particular. But I, I, I do know that the council is going to plan on doing, you know, a process as well.
Right. And one thing we talked about in that retreat was should the county basically come into, come into this process and do essentially a valley-wide future land use and land use exercise, future land use plan exercise. And I think.
Yeah. So that would be a different amendment than just adding nightly rentals, though.
It would. It would. You're right. But.
Is that plausible?
So we're used to doing an entire master plan in six to eight months. That means, I've taken a look at your update and it's a fairly simple update document, but we will start from scratch for doing all elements of a master plan, transportation, economics, all the aspects of what is required by state law as well as what the community might want, including urban design, doing design scenarios, that sort of thing. So I, I think we could do it. It's just that if we could get everybody on board, the longer it takes to get this sort of to a point where we can move forward, I think that we could theoretically use our existing contract to get this going.
Well.
With the idea there's going to be an amendment so that we could just start utilizing this.
By including the council, we're extending the geographic boundary to this San Juan line.
Right. And I've taken a look at their boundary. I guess it's a question of is it the entire Grand County or the Moab portion of it? Because they distinguish between the two in their plan.
Well, I'm not.
Include the Green River.
Well, I think it is just the valley, but I, but I also think that it's a smaller scope than doing like a future land use plan in the valley in terms of addressing the county's lodging issues, because I suspect we're not looking at expanding where they're permitted. It's, we're considering a contraction or additional, either form requirements or ground floor, retail and that sort of thing. So it's act, so it might be a more limited scope than just like.
Full all land uses in the valley.
I would, I would think that maybe they would get there, but I have to say in reading their, the temporary land use regulation that they passed, it's pretty broad in terms of the direction. And then the, that they gave staff in terms of what they wanted them to do. So they might need to scope down a little bit themselves.
So it sounds like that's a conversation that needs to happen.
Yes.
This week.
Yes. That's exactly right. I mean, in terms of that next steps, I think getting with Zachariah pretty quickly and making sure that this is, this would actually work for him, his staff is the, is the next key point.
I didn't understand. Are they under a moratorium as well?
Correct.
And when did theirs start?
Same time.
Two weeks before.
One week before us. Well, and so if you're saying that we're pretty close with the agreement as is, add the nightly rental, extend the boundary to the San Juan line, include the county council in all of our meetings, and get to the end, the goalposts.
Well, I could get you a proposal that you could review that might require some adjustments just with, for, you know, on Monday or something for your review. But what I was saying is that we could just use, we have some funding here now that we could just take this with the understanding and use it in different ways. And when that other gets added, it just gets added. So it gives us the opportunity to just get going. We're going now.
Yes.
So we could get moving now, as long as we were fairly clear about where we're headed. And I think we're going to have to do some additional mapping. We're going to have to do, you know, to just get a grasp of what you have going on here. And so that could give me just to sort of, all I'd need is a notice to proceed and use this in a slightly different direction and that there's going to be a modification. That way we have a notice to proceed and we can just get going right away with the understanding that there would be a contract negotiation added on to it. Maybe it's going to take, I'd imagine it's going to take you a couple of weeks, so.
So can I just clarify, I haven't reviewed this before. So it looks like the deliverables for this are focused around mapping and we're talking about some, is that not true?
No. There's no way to do a, a land use map without having a land use element or section. Your current plan, your land use element, and I know that you, a lot of you worked on it, but it's really just goals and policies. And there's not a lot of background data on it. There's not a lot of analysis that went, technical analysis that is based on understanding the land, where you have vacant land, where you don't have it. That's what we would be bringing to the table so that we would be, starting with your current direction and goals for land use, that we would be doing a more thorough, that's what we've actually been working on now, doing a more thorough analysis of what's on the ground now. And then folding in the public process, what we're hearing from the public of what their issues are, what their visions are, make sure that's aligned with the current direction. And then we move forward to come up with concepts. And again, we'll engage the public, the way we have it outlined here, we have scoping meetings in the beginning to identify issues. We then come up with alternatives or concepts. We take it back to the public in a workshop setting so that we can get, get them weighing in on what's good or bad of what we've come up with and hopefully hone that into a preferred direction. And then we have a draft plan. So it's a combination of mapping and a land use section, which my thought was that it would just be folded into your existing general plan as an amendment.
Okay.
But it seems like one of the outcomes that we went from this are changes in our zone, potentially in our zoning codes in terms of perhaps the size and for, the massing of lodging and distribution of uses within those buildings.
And I know that the county wants that, too.
Right, so.
So that typically doesn't happen until the general plan amendment has been adopted. You usually rarely do that concurrently because you don't know the direction it's going to go. So what we typically do is do a general plan or do a land use plan, do the map as part of it, that gets adopted. And then we, we make recommendations in that document of the changes that are going to happen. And you actually then want to perhaps get a zoning attorney or we can, we can do part of it, but we would want to, again, maybe get a specialist on board for that because, or if you have in-house, if you do your own code writing.
So we do have a downtown plan, which is near completion, which I think some, some of the analysis of like use needs has been done. So I wonder if that might get us part of the way there.
That said, outfit out of Heber, is that right?
What, the avenue, right?
Yeah, Avenue.
Oh, that's Avenue. Okay. Yeah, we work with them sometimes.
But I do understand what you're getting at with like, and, and so I am giving a little pause here because it sounds like this is great for the future land use map and plan, but we do also need to tackle that extra piece of like.
Changes.
Code changes. And so, and, and that's not something that you would do as part of it, which is fine. This is just really good information for us. And I hear what you're saying, do it after.
My question might be, though, as conditions of the moratorium, do you have to have the codes in place or just the plan in place that will direct the codes?
We have to, either, either we have changes in the code adopted by the end of the six months or it reverts back to where it was.
Well, we would, we would want to bring those people in right away, whoever it is.
So Mark, I mean, if I may.
Well, wait, well, just one more second, though. So when you say bring those people in, we would want to bring those people in. We being, let's be specific with the pronoun you.
Landmark design, we'll bring in any of the specialists that need, under our contract.
Okay.
We'll make them in our proposal to you. That the specialists, we, again, we do, I'm, I'm a planner for a small community and we do sort of rudimentary code writing, but we always take it through either a legal review or take it through to a code specialist just to make sure that we're hitting it correctly. And that in itself can take some time. So if we're talking five and a half months, we're going to have to really push forward.
And we could put that in the scope.
Yeah.
All right. Sounds like candy.
So Mark, if I may, here's, here's what I picture. Some years ago, when, when Seven County Coalition and all that was going on and big land use issues or dividing the county in half, the consultants there actually took a big meeting hall, the Grand Centered out there, filled it up with hundreds of people, issued little clickers.
All right.
And they would have different proposals they would throw out and they would have everybody vote on what they did and didn't like. And, and I thought that was a really informative way to do it. And I'm wondering if something along that line for public engagement might work well. And in particular, I mean, general land use plans are great and all, but I think what Kalen is thinking of and I'm thinking of and the rest of these guys as well, in the end, we're going to have to change the code.
Right.
And money's going to be in a part of it. Watch, watch the money flow because it's kind of predictable what's going to happen. If we do start amending uses or taking, worse yet, taking uses out, some people are really going to like it and other people are going to throw a fit. And so at this little clicker, vote on your favorite plan kind of thing, like what you guys did for us today over here on East Center Street, I thought it was great. What they did, they, they drew nifty pictures of the way things are now and they drew three successive alternatives with increasing complexity and da, 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 so forth. And, and the residents all came to agreement on part two or three. So, I mean, I can see you guys doing that sort of thing with, in other words, if we gave you some idea of what typical code changes might look like, like we, you know, and then you could let people vote on that and maybe come to consensus and give them, give them some alternatives.
Yes. Clicker is one way to do it. We, we have avoided it a little bit because we find that the actual clicking process, some people wait until they see how other, it depends if you can wait. It can influence their voting. But what we do is a lot of workshopping. We just did one for Salem in Utah County where we had 120 people show up and we broke them into small groups. We actually worked a group of 12 people. We got them all to kind of figure out what their ideas were and actually get them frustrated to see what we were doing. And then they came back and, and represented their, what they came up with to the group. So it gets them heavily involved and, and it's, it's been a great process. So there's all kinds of tools that we can use. This being code, you're, I think you're right. It's almost like we're going to have to visually show it to them so that they can see what the, the challenges or changes are going to be.
Everything from continue as you've been doing to at the other extreme, stop all growth altogether, as if you could. You can't really, but, and then, you know, progressive steps in between with typical kinds of trades about uses and modifications to, you know, Kalen, for example, and these guys have talked a lot about, oh, a hotel would be fine as long as they provide us some other retail space on the ground floor. I don't know if that's tractable or not, but, but those kinds of options.
Yeah. No, that's how we work.
Okay.
Like retail on the ground floor in gray water.
And affordable housing on the third floor.
Right. Well, we have the percentage, right? With the Wahoo. If it's a hotel, they've got to do some affordable housing.
I mean, just so you know, it sounds like there's a little bit, you know, can we do it in this time? And all I can say is we can throw our, I spoke to my staff before we left and said this could turn into something we have to start working on right away quickly. And so we've got, you know, John, who's joined me tonight, plus a couple more people that will throw.
John, which one's John? Hi, John. Thanks for coming down.
He did all the pretty drawings today, so he did a great job. But we'll, we'll just do what we need to to get it done. But I think the key for us is to find those missing pieces that aren't in our firm and aren't necessarily on our pool of subconsultants. And that's going to probably take a day or two for me to talk to people and see. I have already some ideas floating around. Going to try to avoid attorneys just at this stage because they're so expensive. Well, we, we work, I would, it would be logical to have a land use attorney on board who could actually, we worked with a couple, we've, in South Ogden where I'm the planner, we had a very contentious process that took a couple of years. And we brought them in when it was dealing with, it was related to housing. It was with the all abilities housing. So it was under federal guidelines. And when I heard it, I said, we need to get an attorney on board immediately. And they walked us through it and helped us craft a new ordinance for that. And I don't think this is maybe quite there, that we might want to talk to some other people that are code writers, so.
So the next step then would be, I know I was like, let's set dates and start meeting. But it seems like the next step would be to, we feel good with proceeding. There seems to be an amendment because we're changing the scope a bit. Does that amendment need to come back to council or it's an administrative thing? And then we can get some, we can put this, we can actualize the proposed schedule with a series of dates that we publish. Now, I will say that the December meeting, I was on that committee. I was not able to attend.
I remember we tried getting together.
Yeah. And so I think it's just really important, I don't know who we're going to have on that committee. Maybe we can talk about that for just a minute. But that we really make sure that instead of just setting a date, we make sure that the date works for the key players for that meeting.
But do you need to even do that one again? I mean.
I think so. I think we need to start over. The meeting that we had with our advisory committee was mainly staff and yourself. I think that I've heard now from two members of the public that were invited late and then they never heard back of when the date was going to be. So I assume there's other people that have been invited. And both the people I spoke to were very interested and engaged. That's what we would like to have on that. In addition to staff and council and planning commission, we would like to have members of the public who can give a perspective. And so, and we don't know your community, so we really rely on you, who, some of those people. In fact, one of them was a woman who owns the property on West Central, our little area down there.
Elena?
No, her, she's.
Moab Diggs.
Moab Diggs is the name of her. Overnight rental.
Okay. I will say that if we are going to include county council, that between this council and the Grand County Council, we do have a scope of perspective that is worth understanding. On the county council, we have a gentleman that his family owns and operates hotels just on the other side of the river, another member that has nightly rentals. I think that, you know, small business owners, architect, you know, I think engineer. So we've got some stuff, you know, we're bringing some, some stuff to the meeting as a, as an advisory committee, perhaps.
Okay. And, and I guess my question would be to you, would you see the entire, both councils as part of the advisory committee or that we have representatives of the two bodies joining our committee and then we brief you and the entire county council together? That's the more standard way that we do it, just so that we can get everybody together. And there may even be some open meeting laws about that. And so what we typically do, I believe Karen, you were on our committee. I don't remember if there was somebody else from this council, but it would be good to get a couple of members of your council. This should ultimately go to your planning commission for recommendation so that we would want to get a couple of members of both planning commissions and then members of the public and business community and special, any special interests. Our philosophy is to bring everybody to the table that's going to shout and, and have an interest in this and get them involved in creating a good resolution to things rather than having them say that we did everything in a closed box. And we also already have a website up and running for this project, so we can just change the title. And, and that's a great way of getting information out immediately to everybody. And so we try to use both face-to-face and public social media as much as possible.
So Mark, can you do the first meeting next week? You ready? Tuesday, Wednesday?
I, I think we can. I mean, my schedule is clearing up a little bit and I think it's, I'll just have to sit down with our designated staff and work out our schedules.
Well, and I think we need to.
Be at a whole other county.
And we need to do a doodle poll, like I said. Like, we want to make sure that we don't set a date and hope everyone can hit it. I think that we should, you know, do, be a little more deliberative in the, in the setting of this first meeting as is critical.
But it, it's critical, but its timing is absolutely critical as well. So, I mean, I'm just, I think we're actually at a month. Didn't we enact the ordinance two meetings ago?
No, no.
Just last time.
Okay. It was just last time?
But regardless, like you're you, and I, I agree that.
August 11th is your deadline.
Okay.
That's your 108-day deadline.
August 11th?
From February 12th, August 11th.
Okay. That's more than I thought.
Oh, I like everything that you're saying. It's just making me.
Well, since you said six months, and I was thinking it was, when I keep looking at this at June, July, so this is not bad. I mean, it's on track from what we were planning on.
I mean, do we have to even see if the county is interested in?
We'll move forward regardless, but we need to, we want to, we'll check in with Zachariah tomorrow and see if there's a, if it's, how feasible it is, how we can dovetail them in if possible.
And I assume you'll give me some direction. I'll make, I'll write the proposal as if we're going to involve them.
Yeah.
And then you can, and we'll, we'll break it down into sort of what we think would be their part of it and your part of it for the additional services.
Perfect.
And then you can float it by them and we can, because if we're going to do more mapping and go over that a lot further out, that's just going to take a little bit of technical time, for sure.
So would the expectation of this council be that if we're taking the proposal to the boundary, that we're going to request that the county pick up whatever that difference would be? We'll pay for the bulk of it, but we would ask the county to pay for the difference? And so maybe, yeah, you and I could meet with Ruth and Evan.
Evan's gone for a month.
Who's the vice?
Terry.
Okay.
And to just make sure that it's all feels right.
Sure.
Does that?
They should like that idea. It should save us both money to do it all at once.
So, Mark, I'm sorry, this first meeting, you're going to want two council members, two county council members, two planning commission members on each.
Reach.
Okay.
And then staff and business. So it'll be a big group. I think the fact that we're involving two entities here, it'll have to be. We typically try to get it, you know, our typical advisory committee is somewhere between 12 and 15. I think this is going to be a little bit bigger. And I don't, and we, we don't see that as being unwieldy at all. It's just to get everybody there so they don't feel like that they were left out of the discussion. It maybe is just one planning commission member. The reason that we want representatives of both council and planning commission is we want them to become our advocates for the process.
Mm-hmm.
So they sell it to you and they sell it to their colleagues in planning commission.
We could do the chair of the city and the chair of the county. Who's the county chair? Who's planning commission?
Garish. I think. Evan Claber.
No, for the planning.
Yeah, yeah, Garish. Okay. Then that, I mean, that sounds good. Who on this council is going to be on the plan advisory committee?
We're all interested, just so you know.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not saying that you can't, I, another way to do it was to just do a mega meeting and have everybody there and we can convert them into sort of a technical committee meeting where we have a big body, but that could get a little unwieldy.
Well, we could do myself and two members and we'd still not have a quorum. And then the county would need to do two members.
And then we can still, I still intend that we would have briefings, but I assume that they would be joint briefings with the two councils so that we can, again, for us to come down, we would try to get as much done as we can in two or three days. We'll probably do two, three-day trips. So that'll change our scope a little bit as well because right now we're just, we've been doing overnight things, so.
Would you like to be on the committee?
I would, but I sense.
Karen?
Oh.
I mean, I would too, but I'm. I don't have time.
Mike?
To participate in that, I would love to. The only caveat is I'm going to be gone about three weeks, late May, early June.
Ronnie?
I'm going to defer to these two. Yeah, because it sounds interesting, but I'm happy to, you know.
So then I think we're set. The three of us would be.
Okay.
Yeah?
So just to go back to the committee composition, Mike and I were on the county planning commission during the general plan and there was an advisory committee. And it seemed like it didn't have staff, like it was really a, like a community sounding board that the consultants used to sort of, it's like avoid hidden pitfalls as much as anything, like to bounce ideas off and like discover the language that were triggers for this community and histories that you might not be aware of.
Well, I'm sure we're not. I bet we're a little worried about pitfalls along the way and that's great. And we'll, we're going to rely on, that's what we rely on you for that. But we do, you know, we do see opportunity to have staff there to help answer questions, but it just might be, since it's land use, we don't have to invite you to, or maybe we do, but we like bringing in agencies that are going to be, have, have issues. We might want to invite BLM or, you know, some of the major public land agencies here. Or we might invite them to special meetings that we keep it as a core group. And then as we need more input, we invite other people. We also add in our scope now outreach through focus groups. And that's for all the people that we, you know, have to dive in a little bit deeper. And we can identify that as we move forward.
I just keep smiling bigger and bigger. Focus group is one of like my favorite.
Oh, good.
To remind me of powerhouse, like, you know, it got started, you know, we started off with a narrow focus and it grew and it grew and it grew and eventually it'll start to shrink. But, but I would caution you and us about broadening it out too far because we'll never get there.
Well, and the whole point of getting the public involved is to hear from them, to understand the diversity of, of thought and, and to try to get that in as many venues as possible. But it doesn't mean that you respond equally to all things. as possible. But it doesn't mean that you respond equally to all things that arise. And that's where the committee comes in, is help us, guide, guide us of what is really the direction that we're going to be heading, and what are of these issues that have been raised are really the critical issues. And so what we hope, we never, we've kinda gotten rid of reaching consensus. Our goal is to reach agreement, and sometimes the agreement is just that the process was fair, and that everybody was heard. And if that happens, we find that, that's why we like bringing naysayers to the table, because quite often after they go through a process like this, they're the ones that are out there helping us actually come to a resolution. They get involved in the process. And I know that every community has naysayers and people out there that are, you know, have gripes or whatever, and so if it's in particular somebody you think could be helpful to get them involved, let's get them at the table.
And, and I do wanna just put Rachel Moody's hat, name in the hat, for being on this committee because of her involvement when we went through the C2, and I think that she'd be an important voice. And I'm thinking she's not, she wasn't on it before, right?
I think it'd be good to.
Yeah, she wasn't. She wasn't.
Oh, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you and David, or someone review the list, and.
That's what I would recommend as well. If you could put together, I'd kinda give you an idea of what I, and it's also outlined in this scope of work, that's, I think, the same sort of group. If you have house, since this is dealing with housing, if you have housing advocates, that would be great to get them on board, because that's gonna be a big part of it. Definitely people in the hospitality industry here, I think that I wanna hear from them. And I would love to get a couple of overnight rental people to just understand, 'cause, you know, we've heard sort of the gamut of what the role of overnight housing is playing in your community economically, and maybe some economic justice issues there as well, so.
I'd like to see, yeah, excuse me. So if I may, I'd like to suggest a homework problem for all of us. Say in the next month or so, each of us independently, without talking to anybody else, sketch down how you would, 'cause ultimately what we're gonna do is change the code, or the zoning, okay, zoning and/or code, and sketch out what you think the words might actually do. I mean, it doesn't have to be exact ordinance language, but something that would fit in pretty well. In other words, describe in your own mind, articulate what actually changes in the code that would come into effect, because that's, in the long run, that's where we're gonna go. And then we could factor that into his presentations and all the public discussions and so forth at some point. But, see, if we don't do anything, if we just sit back and let him do all the work, I think we'll be more productive if we give him some direction about where we think we're headed in the long run.
Man, I agree totally with that. You're gonna help us a lot, because we, we're gonna be, there's always a period in the beginning where we're just struggling. That's just part of the process. We need to, we're trying to get to know you, and to know what your issues are, and the more that you can feed us some of that information, or your ideas and thoughts, the better it's gonna be for the process and for us, and to keep this going on track.
Yeah.
Okay.
So thank you.
So we're gonna have a meeting with the county council, Ruth and Terry, I guess, to talk about the collaborative, collaborative effort.
I was gonna just start with Zachariah in the morning, hopefully, and just get, 'cause we, I mean, I feel like the county council was like, yeah, sure, and we just needed to make sure it happened at a.
It's a money thing, so I just feel like it would be good to just.
If you wanna set that up, great.
And then, and then look at the committee. We can, we can also, we could, yeah, have Zachariah at that meeting.
It sounds like there's two pieces, the money, and then sort of the scope, and kind of how it works, and how it, how it's paid for, and like, maybe one is with Zach, one component is with Zachariah, and one's with Ruth. I mean, just, I'm hearing a little bit of tension.
Well, Ruth and a council member, I mean, 'cause what we need is ultimately the council to say yes to.
Yeah.
Footing a part of the bill, and committing to those meetings, so.
David, it would be helpful if you could give me a briefing tomorrow, or just send me an email about what your tentative discussions produced.
Sure, for sure.
And that way I can try to gear the scope for me, yeah.
Well, thank you for staying so late.
Yeah, are you excited? You're like full work.
Yeah, we've been wanting to get going on this for a while. I was wondering if it was a dead project last week, just because I didn't know what was happening here. So it's great to hear that this is moving forward, and I think this is a great opportunity, 'cause there's such correlation between what we're doing in our current scope, and what you're asking us to add on to. It's good.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
One tiny point of privilege, if I may. This is Nat's last council meeting with us, as he is fleeing for better, or I don't know if better, but certainly more, maybe more challenging pastures, and I just thought it was worth acknowledging that.
Yeah, don't say anything bad about us on your way out.
Mic drop.
I'm just kidding.
Thank you very much for your reporting.
Yeah.
Oh, that's exciting.
Have fun in Guatemala, in the Peace Corps, and your service.
What's your focus gonna be there? What's your focus gonna be there?
Agriculture.
Oh, great, yeah, okay, that's common, yeah.
You're branding out, watch creative writing and now journalism, and then it'll be agriculture, right?
Have fun. Okay, so I guess at this point, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Tony, sir second. Thank you, Karen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, adjourned.